Hello, everybody. So it's really nice to have everybody here, both who are coming here virtually and people who are here in person. So we're very excited that the weather is getting nicer and viral loads are going down. So we're able to kind of do this in person. So we're going to start a summer series. This is the first of our, what I call, spring to fall in-person meetings. And then we'll go back to being hybrid over the winter, just do the viral season as well as for weather. So we're really happy to have you here. Welcome. We're going to do a quick introduction for the people on the RDA board that are here. And then we really want to spend this hour hearing from all stakeholders who have generously donated their time to come be with us. We're looking forward to hearing from everybody. So with that, I will start quickly. I am Michelle Spencer Manson. I am a clinical geneticist here at Yale. I'm also a parent of a child with a rare disease. And so I'm, what do you call, and the co-director. Chair. Chair, co-chair with Leslie.
I'm Leslie Bennett. Technically, right now, I'm the vice chair, but we will, we're moving to a co-chair system. I am the rare disease advocate on the council. And I was the parent of the child, a daughter, Kelly, who lived for 32 years with a rare metabolic disorder.
Hi, everybody. I'm Craig Miller. I'm the director of immunology and respiratory disease research at Born, Gained, Behind Pharmaceuticals. Member of the RDA, serving as a research scientist focused on rare disease research.
Colleen, do you want to go next?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Colleen Brunetti. I am the adult rare disease patient representative for the RDA.
Dorian.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dorian Long, and I work at the Connecticut Department of Social Services, representing that agency.
Emily.
Hi, I'm Emily Germaine Lee. I'm a physician scientist at UConn, a professor there, and a pediatric endocrinologist that clinical practices at Connecticut Children's.
Okay, are there any other board members we've missed? Okay. Oh, Paul, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, my name is Paul Chase, and I'm a public assistance consultant with the Department of Social Services Community Options Unit.
All right. Well, thank you all. Let's start with speakers. Okay. Mitch, do you want to say a few words to open us up? You're muted. You're muted.
That would help if I unmuted. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time today.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to just say a couple of words. And I don't want to crowd out any of the important work that you guys are doing. But I, on behalf of the Connecticut General Assembly, I want to welcome everybody to the first in-person meeting. It's significant how far we've come. And it's going to be even more significant to see how far we go. So the ball is in your court, everybody. So let's, 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 let's make, make this thing happen. Take care, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Audio trouble for chat.
Okay. Anybody else having audio trouble? Okay. Juliette, do you want to speak next?
Yes. Hello, everybody. I would like to say thank you for inviting me today. And I'm Julieta Bonvins Sashago. I work at Connecticut Children's as a clinical research associate. And I am an assistant professor at UConn Health, Department of Pediatrics. As part of my job, I coordinate complex clinical trials and contribute to research projects. I use several hats in this rare disease community. And I wanted to say more about my, my personal experience. So I was born in Argentina 36 years ago with a rare condition that is called glycogen stores disease type 1A. And this is a life-threatening condition. And some of the symptoms that this condition has is hypoglycemia, increased lactic acid, increased triglycerides, and uric acid. And as part of the treatment for this condition, I have to take or search every four hours, is a certain amount every four hours. And this is day and night. And I also, I also have to follow like a certain diet restricted with sucrose, lactose, and fructose. And, and I want to say that this has been the treatment since I was diagnosed. And it's the only treatment approved right now for this disease. And I grew up in a small city, far away from big hospitals. And my family did a great job going around finding centers to get the diagnosis. Since I started to have some symptoms, I had several, I have had several discompensations during my life due to other illnesses. And I was lucky, you know, lucky enough to, to be referred to the right doctor and to be able to get the proper treatment during my first years of life. And I think that they, I want to share also that the key in my case was network, right? And so my pediatrician, who used to live like two blocks away from my home, did a really good job to trying to help my family while I was having different discompensations. And, you know, my specialist always lived far away, like five, five hours away from my hometown. And that was very like difficult for them. But I think that working together and working in a network was key for me. And I also want to emphasize that even with, you know, with, with limited resources and no internet at that moment, I was able not only to survive, but also to achieve education and to, you know, became like, have some of my dreams became true. And another thing is like, since I grew up with a lot of uncertainties, and I am a very curious person, I decided to become a physician to be able to find answers to all my questions. And, and also after that, I completed residency pediatrics, and I work in metabolic diseases. And I used to take care of patients with other rare disease conditions and also with these conditions in my country. And, and after living the physician life, that is very intense with endless, you know, days, workdays, I decided to focus my, my, my career in research. And in 2019, I moved to Connecticut Children's to work here. I moved to the US to work with Connecticut Children's as part of the glycogen stores disease programs. And since then, I have been working with different trials for different rare conditions. And, and also aside my work, I am a board member of the Hispanic Society for Rare Diseases that is based in the US. And I also, I am scientific, part of the scientific advisory board for the glycogen stores disease association in Colombia. And I also contribute with Nord since last year. And aside of the, from this, I also contribute with the American Association for Glycogen Stores Disease, giving conference to the community and to the healthcare professionals and to promote awareness about this condition. I also help families and patients with rare diseases to navigate different healthcare systems worldwide. And I am privileged and I feel that I am, you know, I committed with this, with this rare disease community. And I want to say thank you again for all the fantastic work that you are doing and for letting me be part of this meeting today. And if it's anything that I can do or help or contribute with this council, please let me know.
Thank you. You're a great resource for us. Frank, do you want to go next? Frank Mora?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Frank Tavares. My friend Tavares Mora. And I am someone, so just a little bit of background. My family is originally from the Dominican Republic and moved to New York City in the nine, early 90s. I was born in 93. And at that time, there wasn't mandated screening for the sickle cell treat or sickle cell disease. And also my family not knowing, you know, anything about it. You know, they weren't aware of, you know, possibility of them having to treat themselves. So I was born with sickle cell disease. I lived with sickle cell, sickle cell disease. And it's, you know, been a pretty rough journey in terms of just living with it. As we all know, it's a red blood cell disorder, hemoglobin disorder that affects the structure of the red blood cells, allowing them to become sickled form. And, you know, that's where the name comes from, kind of like a banana shape. And, you know, they become real rough and sticky. And that makes it, or results in the red blood cells not getting to the vital organs in the body, such as brain and muscles and, you know, other organs, kidneys especially, which is a big complication. And it also results in pain crises. So, you know, as many of you know, sickle cell disease, many patients come into the emergency department with very excruciating pain as I have also experienced it. And that pretty much has, is, is pretty much like the, the, one of the main symptoms of sickle cell disease. And, yeah, so I believe it was mandated in 2001 for the screening to, for sickle cell treat and sickle cell disease to be implemented for newborns. So I'm now 30 years old. And I'm going into my fourth year of medical school at Quinnipiac. And, which is in North Haven. Frank H. Schneider is the name of the medical school. And it's been a pretty rough challenge, you know, navigating that and, you know, other aspects of life, such as undergrad and even years of, before that, such as high school and elementary in terms of experiencing pain crises from sickle cell disease. One of the leading causes of that is acute chest syndrome, which I have also experienced acute chest syndrome myself. Constant blood transfusions and, you know, just appointments with all types of specialists, whether it's hematologists or ophthalmologists, orthopedics. And a big part of sickle cell disease is also the stigma that comes with it. As I mentioned briefly, the pain crisis is one of the main symptoms. And, you know, that is mainly treated with opioid medications. And, you know, sickle cell disease is a disease that mostly affects African Americans or minority populations, Hispanics also like myself. And, you know, showing up to emergency departments, asking for opioids, especially in the midst of, you know, the opioid crises that has been going on. You know, it could be really stigmatized and just like uncomfortable for the individuals themselves, as I'm sure, you know, other individuals with sickle cell disease have experienced. So I'm a volunteer and a board member for the Sickle Cell Disease Association of Southern Connecticut, which is based in New Haven. It's now called Michelle's House on Chapel Street. And, you know, part of our goals and duties is to raise awareness for sickle cell and do fundraisers such as our yearly walk-a-thons that occurs in September of every year. And, you know, as I mentioned before, just educating the public about it and making sure, you know, that those individuals with sickle cell are supported, whether it's, you know, in a social manner, education-wise, or even just, you know, getting the right type of care in, in terms of, you know, when they have to go into the hospitals and, and clinics. So I'm, you know, glad to be here and here to answer any questions that I'm able to answer. And, you know, I definitely appreciate this committee for, for all the work that you guys do.
Oh, thank you for joining us today. And it's just amazing that you're in medical school. Really is. Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's see. Chris, do you want to come and say a few words? Chris Curran?
Sure. Hello, everybody. Thank you for inviting me to speak today about Duchenne muscular dystrophy newborn screening, House Bill 5321. My 13-year-old son Connor has Duchenne muscular dystrophy. This disease is very difficult to diagnose in the early stages. And in fact, Connor had a delayed diagnosed, he was delayed in diagnosis at four years of age. Duchenne muscular dystrophy is a devastating neuromuscular disorder that deprives its patients of function and ultimately their lives. This disease slowly robs children of the ability to use their muscles. Walking is the first to go. Then the child loses the ability to feed himself or even hug his parents, and then fatally ends in heart and lung failure by the time the child reaches his late twenties. During the first four years of Connor's life, we were concerned that he was not able to meet childhood physical milestones as quickly as his brothers. But our family pediatrician advised us, there are wide variables to when a child reaches certain developmental milestones. By the age of two, our concern and confusion grew over Connor's apparent muscle weakness. At this point, we decided to enroll Connor in the Connecticut birth-to-three program. The team came up with a plan to try to strengthen his muscles through various exercises. Unfortunately, these exercises involve many eccentric contractions or exercises that require the patient to put on the brakes, like walking down a steep hill. These exercises are definitely not recommended for patients with Duchenne muscular dystrophy. They do more damage than good. As Connor aged, he fell more often, had low endurance, and had a very difficult time walking up the stairs by himself. It was a difficult time for us as his parents. We were frustrated that the months of birth-to-three therapy seemed to not help at all. And we were confused and worried for our child. It became increasingly more obvious that he was developmentally outside normal variables. And we were referred to a developmental pediatrician and neurologist who diagnosed Connor with Duchenne muscular dystrophy. This was a devastating diagnosis for Connor and heartbreaking, and a heartbreaking one for all of us in his family. As difficult of a diagnosis that Duchenne is, early diagnosis would have enabled our Connecticut birth-to-three team to come up with a more appropriate exercise and stretching plan for Connor. And he would have had been enrolled at birth, enabling him to benefit from the program from the very beginning of his life. Also, as parents, we would have had the opportunity to learn more about Duchenne. The fear and confusion that so many DMD parents experience when faced with limited information on why their child is struggling with basic physical abilities is real and traumatic. Knowledge is empowering. When Connor was diagnosed, there were not many available drug treatments except for steroids. This is not the case today. Many new drugs have been approved. And, and having that diagnosis early in a child's life enables parents to treat on a timely basis. Time matters with Duchenne. With every passing day, kids with Duchenne lose strength and abilities. Connor's story does not have to be the reality in Connecticut any longer. Early diagnosis is easy with a simple blood test costing only $8. Connecticut has the opportunity to make historic and positive change in the Duchenne care in our state. And our family is grateful to our local Ridgefield State Representative, Amy Berger Gravalo, for being a cosponsor of House Bill 5321 and being an incredible champion for the Duchenne and rare disease community. It is vitally important that Connecticut legislators act now. Acting now ensures patients have the opportunity to address their DMD kids' medical and physical therapy needs in appropriate and timely manner. Acting now ensures that DMD patients are not inadvertently harmed by inappropriate physical therapy exercises. Acting now ensures that DMD parents and kids don't have to experience the confusion and emotional trauma that late diagnosis brings. We are hopeful that kids in the future will have the benefit of early diagnosis and that House Bill 5321 moves out of the appropriations committee and onto full approval by the Connecticut legislator and by Governor Lamont. Thank you for your kind intentions of my story.
I will, I will actually, my own support for the next person, I actually work as the MDA geneticist here. We are Duchenne Center of Excellence. And I also strongly support this, what the difference we can diagnose patients early is really significant. So I do also endorse passing this bill. I think it makes a huge difference. And our newborn screen lab is well set up to handle this. Um, how do we have next?
We're having David Negrone.
Okay. Thank you.
So my name is David Negrone. I am a resident Gilford, Connecticut, and father to two daughters. I'm here to speak about Senate Bill 206, the expansion of the Katie Beckett waiver program. The goal of the bill is to expand the Katie Beckett waiver to shore in the waitlist by 50 slots and to allocate a set number towards terminally ill children, which includes children such as my daughter, who has a terminally illness called Tay-Sachs disease. And I'm many words to talk today. I did do a full testimony to the Human Services Committee. But I think balancing taking care of a terminally ill child and working full-time takes a, takes a lot of time. So, sorry, I'm emotional. My, my daughter, as there was an article in Harper Current two weeks ago titled, "When There's No Time To Waste," is about my daughter's story and, and the need to expand this crucial waiver program. It's a supplemental Medicaid waiver program designed to support families in providing access to homebound care for when, and to avoid hospitalizations. Our daughter is five years old. She's definitely showing signs of her progression. Just this week, we got delivered three devices for respiratory care, and we have more devices on the way as the illness is just unfortunately picking up steam. And we really have no time to waste. The bill currently was, had full support from the Human Services Committee and currently sitting with appropriations. The cost to pass this bill would be approximately $1.3 million to clear the 50 seats. I believe with the over $3 billion budget towards Medicaid, there's always room to find funds. As someone who worked in city government before, there's always ways to shuffle the dollars to be able to meet the needs of all the programs that are needed. I think the, you know, this, this, the Katie Beckett waiver program really is a lifeline. And Connecticut is the only state in New England that has a cap on the number of seats, unfortunately. And that's structured in the way that the state decided to set it up. But there are many other states that have started Katie Beckett waiver programs that are much more proportional to their population. And I urge Connecticut to take this first step towards expanding access to, not just terminally ill children, but other very medically fragile children that need access to therapies and home care so they can live the best lives possible. That's it.
I actually, again, I'd like to support this. This is the patient population I take care of. And I know this is going to cost money, but it will save the state money. So being able to get more stuff done at home, keeping families at home with their children, not only is it important, I think, but from an ethical and quality of life standpoint. But even if you were just to look at the money, it will save money in terms of hospitalizations coming in, other care we need. It is a cost-effective program and really should, should go through.
Is there anyone else who needs to speak, was child to pick up or needs to speak shortly? If not, I'll just start going through the list that I have.
I'll say something.
Come on.
I'm just gonna.
I was gonna add you later. That's fine.
What's that?
I was gonna add you later, but that's fine. Go ahead.
I'm David's father, Chloe's grandfather. And I really appreciated the comments made by the medical professional from the Connecticut Children's Hospital, where she said she felt lucky, she was grateful. I'm grateful. I'm grateful for people like Leslie Bennett, this council. So Chloe was diagnosed in November of 2022. Earlier this year, National Tay-Sachs and the FDA had their first ever externally-focused patient, I have the words wrong, but patient-focused drug development meeting. A few weeks later, it was Rare Disease Day in Connecticut up at the Legislative Office Building. Two weeks later, there was the public hearing of the Human Services Committee. We've been watching the Connecticut YouTube channel, you know, all the hearings since then. It's been a real education. I'm grateful for all the members of the committee, the amount of hours they're putting in, the compassion they've shown us. What I wonder about are the numbers. David shared some of the numbers. Connecticut state budget has a $25 billion budget. The Appropriations Committee approved recently deficiency funding of $135 million from Medicaid overruns, which works out to 0.5% of the total budget. The same budget has 21% of our total budget allocated for pension funding for state employees, teachers, when historically it was 10 to 12. I think there is a need to reshuffle the deck. As the gentleman here said, time matters. It's, it's time to act now. These children are terminal. The families are dealing with a lot. In Baltimore, we just recently had a bridge go down that nobody expected. There was no question, where do we, we can't do it. You have to do it. This is something that needs to be done. We're taxpayers, we're citizens. These are our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, do you want to speak next?
Is there another Carolyn or? Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's great. Hi, I'm Carolyn Macisa. I am a, the Director of Research Operations and Development at Connecticut Children's. I'm also the co-director with my esteemed colleague who's online today, Emily Germaine Lee, with the Scientific Center for Rare Disease at Connecticut Children's Research Institute. I'm also a medical educator at Yale University and the Nether School of Medicine. And Frank, I will definitely be talking to you after this meeting to love to connect with you. I also work with Julieta, and she really is an amazing advocate, an amazing human. It's really nice hearing from her today. She didn't tell everybody that she and I just got a grant to study the natural history of disease of glycogen storage disease. So not only is she, yeah, so it's really amazing. So, you know, not only does she work very hard in all of her advocacy and volunteer work, but also is really invested in, in giving research, some research done. So the reason I'm here today, and I'm really quite honored to be here, and thank you so much for having me today, is to talk about another issue that doesn't have any legislation currently on the table. But it's something that I've been working really hard on at Connecticut Children's and beyond. And, you know, we know that there are a lot of challenges within the rare disease population. And so, again, finding knowledgeable healthcare providers, getting an accurate diagnosis or being misdiagnosed often happens, you know, the sort of so-called diagnostic odyssey. And then, you know, really having access to knowledgeable healthcare providers and a community in which many people are defined within their rare disease advocacy organizations. So, you know, some of the good news is that some of the childhood rare disorders, as you know, half of rare diseases affect children. And because of better either therapeutics or care or management, some of these kids are surviving longer. Or if it's not a fatal disease, they are being cared and managed in childhood. And that's the point I'm talking about today. So even So even if a child has childhood care and they're managed, what happens in adulthood is actually really has some negative consequences. And that's because the transition from pediatric care to adult care, and in my world, we call it the black hole, because there's often not the infrastructure in place or the conversations in place that allow that transition to happen. And it, and there is, there are consequences of that. The consequences are that you have, you lose a lot of the gains that you've achieved in childhood care. And we also see an increase in the number of morbidities and sadly in mortality after aging out of the pediatrician. And in fact, you know, at Connecticut Children's, we have pediatricians who are still caring for adult patients because they literally have nowhere else to go. So one of the ways that the philosophies or mechanisms in place to mitigate this really challenging period in care is something called pediatric to adult transition care. A few years ago, a couple of years ago, I created with my colleagues and with the XLH Network, the Exlin Typophosphatemia Network, I studied rare metabolic bone diseases. As one of my scholarly activities was to create a transition toolkit. And we're currently in the process of updating it. And but really have becoming more involved in advocating for this transition care as part of a standard of care for all children with chronic rare progressive disorders so that it becomes part of their intrinsic healthcare. The good news is, is there's some amazing programming out there. And one in particular program called GOT Transition was created by Dr. Patience White. It's available to all healthcare institutes and providers. And this year for our rare disease symposium at the Frank H. Neder MD School of Medicine in collaboration with Connecticut Children's, we will be sponsoring a, the theme of our programming this year will be pediatric to transition, pediatric to adult transition care. And we are incredibly fortunate to have Dr. Patience White be our keynote speaker this year. So that's on October 18th, on Friday. And for anybody who's present here today, I have some handouts that outline the six core elements of transition care. Transition care begins early in childhood with the family, the patient, and the caregivers. And in the XLH population, we start, we recommend starting at age eight, most start at age 12. And the progression in age appropriate manner follows those three teams all the way through young adulthood. When, and including young adulthood, when these kids are now navigating how to get insurance, they're navigating, becoming involved in relationships where they have to disclose information about their, their particular rare disease. Also in the workplace, when they have to start talking to their, to their supervisors and their bosses about accommodations that they might need or the impact that a rare disease may be having on them. That transition care and that transition planning starts really early in life, again, in an age appropriate fashion so that as they progress through their disease, they're able to acquire knowledge that's appropriate and specific to their disease so that they are ready to navigate the next steps. And another clinical, intrinsic part in programming is helping these young adults find that care as an adult so they don't lose those gains that they were able to achieve with their careful care during pediatrics. So that's all I'm going to share with you today. I wanted to put on everybody's radar. We have the event October 18th at the Nether Frank H. Neder School of Medicine at North Haven. We'll have a lot of information. We'll have a patient pair, a patient panel related to transition care as well as our typical information that we have related to research advocacy and education. So, and then one last plug for this Saturday at the Quinnipiac University Hamden Campus is the Denise Di Senzo Walk for Rare Disease. If anybody has time and wants to come by and stop by and walk for an amazing cause and to meet other individuals who are affected by rare diseases, we invite you to join us. Thank you so much.
All right. So our next speaker is going to be Dr. Jean Wei Zhang, who I have had the privilege of knowing now for 20, 20 years, I think. So starting as a fellow, working with him all the way now to being, working with him as a colleague. So Dr. Zhang is a, is our chief of genetics here at Yale. He is also co-director in the Rare Disease Center of Excellence with me and does a tremendous amount of important translational research for rare disease. So he's going to talk a little bit about this.
Can I connect to the, to the, to the screen or not?
The same way we do it during grand rounds, which I don't know how to do.
That's good to say. Maybe it could probably save some time. We've got five minutes to try to figure out the technique. Well, second, Michelle, and welcome everyone to, to the year. I'm so glad, Michelle, I'm leading this effort this year. And as you know, Michelle, make my job much easier unless she's a consultant chief of clinical operations. I can dedicate more time, kind of looking forward for, enjoy the future. So I want to share one of the exciting, ongoing projects here at Yale. Some you probably learned from some social media and other national member. As you probably know, the rare disease diagnostic obviously is getting better. Then immediately a question is when you made a diagnosis, so what do you do for that family? To me, it's a logic, it's very simple. If you have a genetic disease, if you want to develop mostly effective treatment, it's a correct natural mistake, right? So that's a logic, it's very simple. It's even a lot of family come to us, the high school student who are asking for their brother. Why you just fix that DNA? So with new CRISPR technology, we are definitely capable doing that very efficiently in the lab, in the peach dish, in the animal. How do we translate that to the clinic and truly get a benefit? That's the effort NIH has dedicated about eight years ago, or five years ago. Common fund, NIH common fund, it's a, it's a direct fund, almost given 200, total about $300 million, dedicated how to translate that gene editing called a CRISPR, I guess, and that's the people, our fam, parents and other, called a CRISPR, a basic gene server, develop a new tool, translate to the patient. So that's a huge amount of, I guess, it's a huge amount of money from NIH budget, but still, we think it's small money for the rare disease community because we have a, we have a 5,000 condition. Each one deserves the equal share for this technology. So that we, the CRISPR technologies there, how to deliver to the patient, particularly deliver to the brain, that's the one of the significant challenge. That's a two type of thing you heard about. One is called barrels, AV barrels, annual, a social barrels delivery, which oftentimes parents get scared, well, you deliver the barrel to my kid's brain. Indeed, that's a concern. The second is emerging technology. It's you have a nanoparticle. It's a different barrel, but nanoparticle is too big a size, it's now easy penetrating to the brain. So as you know, two thirds of genetic condition always affect the brain. So these two technologies now very, very effective. But luckily, sometime people ask me why you moved to the year and Michelle kind of convinced me, come to Yale. Oh, and then four years ago. So we, I find a biomedical engineer collaborated and crossed the street. He developed a very, very good tool. It's a non-burrow, non-nanoparticle. And the very technical, just chemical modify this deliver tool became very smaller size, only 14 nanometer. So you can penetrate into the brain very well. So we are very excited. So we submit a grant, that's, no, that's 14 months ago. Now, we once, we use this tool, we could deliver gene editing in the two brain disorder. One is syndrome, which is my favorite. I studied for now 25 years. Another one called H14, but not many people know, it's another autism or neurodevelopmental disorder. So we said, we're going to use this two model to deliver this, use this tool to, to get this one to the clinic. So we want to design a study, do the FDA IND study for three years, total of five year. We got 40 million, which is one of the largest grant ever. We are the only one at Yale for this $200 million, conducted this clinical stage of a study. All others are very, very preclinical. So we are the most advanced one, want to move this technology to the rare disease. So, so first three years, it's kind of IND study, get FDA approval. And the year four, year five, if all saved to go, and we're going to face one, face two trial for two condition, which Michelle is part of a second phase. She doesn't do the bench. I do the lot of bench and other. So, so we can only honor her for a second phase into small scale, but prove the concept. So we are very excited. The key is if it's successful, it's not only, only for these two condition. It's going to be benefit for several, we consider at least 100,000 other genetic condition affect the brain. So hope that, that's good news for everyone here, exciting news. But of course, I cannot making prediction what's going to happen. It's a research. We have to work on it. But so far, everything it's on the direction we predicted. So now I can share with you maybe two years later and say, okay, we indeed have a face one, face two trial. Then after that, then many of you here, you can suggestion what disease can be applied to this condition. So that's what I want to share. All right.
Elizabeth.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Olver and I am a clinical research associate here at Yale in pediatric endocrinology. I work at the Yale Center for XLH, which as Carolyn mentioned, is Exlin Typophosphatemia, a rare metabolic bone disorder, primarily focused on phosphate wasting. I'm here today to speak about the, the interaction that I've had with the patient advocacy organization here in the US, the XLH Network. I've worked here at Yale since 2006 and shortly thereafter, I was connected with the XLH Network. And while the XLH Network is a patient advocacy organization here in the US, it has global ties because it's a rare disease. There are many patients around the world and in various different countries who, who don't have a local patient advocacy organization. And while I'm speaking about the XLH Network as the US-based organization, it's occurred to me over the years how important it is for patients that, that come to Yale to have an even more local, center-based sort of social connection. So I'll be speaking a little bit about that today. So in 2006, as I mentioned, I began working as a research associate in pediatric endocrinology here at Yale. And it was shortly after I started my new position that I began meeting patients with the rare metabolic bone disorder, XLH, Exlin Typophosphatemia, in the clinical setting under the guidance of Dr. Thomas Carpenter and Dr. Carl and Sonia. The introduction to patients with XLH was multifold. This was for my own education to gain the understanding and awareness of the clinical signs and symptoms of the disorder and to see both the similarities and the diversity in the phenotype and physiology of patients with the same rare condition. And in meeting the patients and their families, the hope was that they would gain trust in me, someone who in the not so distant future would be their connection and resource for participating in clinical trials, research. Not long after I started to meet patients and their families, I noticed that one of the most popular questions I was asked wasn't about XLH or treatment. It was, do you know anyone else like me? Or if there are multiple people in the same family, do you know anyone else like us? And while XLH is a genetic condition, approximately 20 to 30% of patients are thought to have a spontaneous mutation or be the only person in their family with XLH. So many of our patients either had never met anyone else with XLH or if they had, it was another person in their immediate family. The patients were genuinely happily surprised when the answer to their question was yes. And even happier when I mentioned that the patients I had seen before and would be seeing after them also had XLH. They could not believe there are others in the same building with their same condition. It was around the same time that I was introduced to the leadership of the XLH Network. I said, the patient advocacy organization for XLH in the US. And at that time, they existed as a listserv and their membership primarily interacted by reading and responding to long threads of messages that were sent at various time points throughout the month. The leadership of the network was frustrated by depending on volunteers and always seemed to be the same small group of volunteers and the lack of supports, whether financial, time, or resources for a small rare disease group that was trying to be a viable and credible patient organization. Since that time, patient advocacy organizations like the XLH Network have evolved and continue to evolve as knowledge of rare disorders increases. In the last two decades, this knowledge has increased exponentially as new sequencing technologies identify more and more pathogenic variants. Those patients who genetics were previously classified as variants of uncertain significance may have a newly identified mutation, providing those with a previously unknown diagnosis can answer to their mysterious symptoms. Advances in molecular technologies have led to promising new therapeutics. With these technological advances, patient advocacy organizations have been called upon to take an active role in clinical and translational research. In a recent study by Patterson et al., it was found that in a cohort of patient advocacy organizations, most have not only engaged in research, but also contributed in some capacity to a clinical trial. Patient advocacy organizations are instrumental in helping to inform rare disease research done by large academic medical centers and pharmaceutical sponsors. It helped to meet enrollment milestones by the sharing of outreach and recruitment materials through their patient portals, social media, and in-person meetings. This is especially important because two of the barriers for clinical trial participation in rare disease populations are the lack of awareness and the mistrust of the medical or pharmaceutical communities. It took several more years for a group of patients largely from the Yale community to come together to form a robust, more robust board of directors for the XLH Network. And with the addition of a scientific advisory board with Dr. Carolyn Macisa as the chair and Dr. Carpenter as a member, the XLH Network has developed from a listserv to a patient advocacy organization that is committed to fostering community, advocacy, research, education, and support for those with XLH and their families. One of their most popular initiatives is XLH Day, an annual event which is focused on providing an opportunity for patients and families to come together to learn about XLH from multidisciplinary experts and to meet others just like them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They really have come quickly.
Oh, thank you. And I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today and to be, come so closely involved with the XLH patient community.
Megan, would you want to say a few words?
Yes. Hi, first of all, I just wanted to say that thanks so much for having me here. This is a true honor to speak in this context of medical professionals and like. My name is Megan Freeman and I am somebody that's Megan Freeman and I am a patient with a rare disease and I'm a rare disease advocate. I have a rare disease that is not really well known. I'm one of 170 something cases worldwide and counted certainly by the days. So I'm here just to speak about my experience because my experience has gone back to a unique time when I was a teenager. When I was, when I was, when I was a teenager, I just ended up having delayed puberty. So I remember then thinking, well, okay, so what quote is wrong with me? So after several different diagnostics testing, I've then since gotten the diagnosis. And my dad is in the back there, so he can certainly understand that Jody, in his own way, just like as much as it's been hard for me, I guess, that I got the diagnosis of a two tili tumor. So this is because, now, you So this is because now you've got to wonder, okay, so tumor, the word tumor obviously could kind of be serious. So immediately remembered, thinking the worst, remember thinking, am I going to die? And so of course, it's, it's been benign because of, of, of lactinoma. But I remember thinking, am I gonna die? Am I going to live to get married and have kids? So as a fourteen-year-old, it's something that's definitely, definitely what showed me. And so I'm here just to try and just speak about my condition, just to say that you are not alone. Because if you have an overload of, quote, lactinoma, which is what I had, which caused the benign tumor, then you are not alone. I try and just speak with others who may have my good squeeze. I have also just connected with others in the rare disease community, even talked with people worldwide who happened to know someone who had my condition because I just heard about the, I've had a social media where I should get that one out. So I've been.
Great job raising awareness.
Oh, thank you. So yeah, I'll be quick. I'll say that, I'll say that I've just been speaking with some, much later certainly since like two thousand, since twenty twenty-one. And I am speaking here about newborn screening because as always, I think it's certainly always a good thing just to keep in mind so whether people do not have serious complications such as seizures or just malformations of the heart or kidney. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil, Phil Morella.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Thank you. My name is Phil Morella. We live here in Connecticut. My wife and I have four children. Two of them were born with an ultra rare disease called Neumon Pick Type C. It's a cholesterol storage and trafficking disease that historically took children by the age of thirteen or fourteen years old. The last twenty-two years, we've been fundraising. Our organization is Dame Los Angeles Research Trust. And we've been fortunate to, to have six therapy clinical trials. We have two drugs before the FDA right now and a third hopefully going into, to the FDA a little bit later this year. Um, it's been very difficult with an ultra rare disease, understandably, to get, get approvals. Um, I'm actually here today to maybe put a new thought on the, on the agenda for, for the, for the ARDA. Our daughter Dana passed away at the age of just before her twentieth birthday in two thousand and thirteen. Uh, but our youngest child Andrew is twenty-four, going on twenty-five. Um, doing far better because he's had the benefit of two experimental medications that, that we have. And yet he does suffer somewhat from, from seizures. He has what they call, this is often referred to as sort of a childhood Alzheimer's or dementia. Uh, so he certainly has some, some cognitive limitations for sure. We went through the high school program until Andrew aged out at twenty-two. And that was as we approached his twenty-second birthday, was the first time that we looked into alternative programs that we needed for him going on from that summer, you know, beyond. And unfortunately, what no one had told us at the high school was that in order for Andrew to be eligible for Department of Developmental Services support, we needed to have had a neuro psych right before he turned eighteen. Uh, now Andrew has had multiple neuro psychs over the years. He's been a part of a natural history study at the NIH and Neumon Pick Type C since two thousand and six. So, uh, we thought this wouldn't necessarily be a problem because you look at his IQ at age seven, below average, but it was still eighty-seven. Uh, by the age of fourteen, his IQ had diminished to seven. Um, now coincidentally, we had a neuro psych at the NIH again at the age of nineteen. And unfortunately, his IQ then was a fifty-eight. Um, but DDS still denied him any services because we couldn't prove by neuro psych that a year earlier than his last psych, he wasn't under seven. Um, and, uh, you know, you think about the way the law has been drafted in terms of the finding intellectual disability. It was actually changed in two thousand and twelve to say that the, in the intellectual disability was to have existed at age eighteen. It was changed to say originated before eighteen. Um, and yet DDS denied Andrew any, any services. Um, and I think that with the current thinking even in, from, from the American Psychology Association and whatnot, uh, this, this law is somewhat out of date. No one thinks of the developmental period anymore as ending at age eighteen, uh, from what I understand. And to deny someone services when you could clearly demonstrate a, a, you know, developmental decline. I mean, Andrew's unfortunately, you know, losing neurons, if you will, every day. And this is a process that started, you know, at birth, if not even conception. Um, so I just would like to see, uh, one of our projects be modifying this law. There aren't a whole lot of patients with lysosomal storage diseases, but I can tell you almost all of them have a neurological deficit that progresses over time. Um, and there's other diseases. You know, fortunately, there is one disease specifically mentioned in, in the law, which is Prader-Willi syndrome. So, you know, that's, that's a good thing for those patients and those families. But there's an awful lot of other rare disease patients that have neurodegenerative diseases that aren't covered. And I just hope that that's, excuse me?
You're definitely right on that.
Yeah, something that we, we need to sort of look at because it's, um, it's very difficult. I mean, my daughter Dana required twenty-four seven care when she passed away. Um, we're blessed that Andrew is doing as well as he is. But, um, you know, if you ask him what he had for breakfast this morning, he couldn't tell you. Um, so he remembers things. It's, it's very much like Alzheimer's. He remembers things from, from ten or more years ago, but it's the short-term memory and the learning ability and whatnot that he can't be, you know, he can't be alone. He can't function. So anyway, I appreciate the time and I hope that that's something we can put on our to-do list.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for bringing that up. I will even tell you as a practitioner who takes care of this patient population for years, I did not realize you couldn't qualify for DSS if you had, like, if you hadn't had the review by eighteen. So, so A, I think it will help me actually take care of my patients, um, probably other people who are clinical. But also I think it's a really important issue for us to build to address. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Um, Amy, are you here?
Yep. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
My name's Amy Chickles. I'm with ALS United Connecticut. I'm our director of programs. Uh, we are a patient advocacy organization that serves about four hundred Connecticut residents every year who have ALS, commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease. ALS is a rare neuromuscular disease with no known cause or cure. There is a small percentage with an identified gene, but that's only about ten percent of those who are diagnosed with the disease. Um, the prognosis when you have ALS is usually a three to five-year life expectancy. And it is very rapid and progressive. Uh, I'm not here to talk about any specific bill, um, but I did want to talk a little bit about living with a rare disease. That's something, obviously, the majority of our patients that we serve are adults, frequently older, but we do have some children, some teenagers. And so to them, it's very important to be able to stay in the home, to have access to equipment, to have access to clinical trials. There are a few medications available for them, not a lot, but to have access to those things as they continue to be able to live their life as best they can. Um, and the other thing which I think a number of people have touched on, as with most rare diseases, the diagnosis for ALS is kind of a process of elimination. And so getting quicker diagnosis is having general physicians who are a little more familiar, not just with ALS, but with a lot of rare diseases, um, I think would help the community in general. And that's something that we find, uh, a lot of times it can take over a year to get diagnosed with ALS. And when you only have three to five years, that's a really long time. So the importance of staying in the home, support for caregivers, always a need for home health care workers. All those things that for everyone with a rare disease, that is an issue. That's really all I want to talk about, but just thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Jody?
Can I say something, please?
Yes.
Hi, uh, Dr. Felice at hospital. Hello? Dr. Felice at Hospital for Special, Special Care. Am I, do you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Uh, I wanted to say hello to Amy. We work hand in hand with Amy at ALS United and care for about two hundred and twenty-five patients each year with amyotrophic lateral sclerosis and are the ALS Center of Excellence at Hospital for Special Care. And I'm so happy that Amy's here and, uh, it's also refreshing to talk about a rare adult disease. Um, and, uh, and the things that we're doing to try to take care of patients. And also we administer a large clinical trials program uh, to try to find a medication that slows, uh, the progression of ALS, uh, ultimately leading to a cure. Uh, unfortunately ALS is probably many different diseases and that's problematic. Uh, especially knowing that many of them are genetics genetically based and, uh, you have a large percentage that is sporadic. So, um, that, that sometimes is discouraging when you're trying to develop medications that target, uh, specific pathways in, uh, the degeneration process in ALS. But I just wanted to say thank you to Amy for all she does at ALS United and, and to tell everyone that, uh, our role in working hand in hand with her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jody Gillan. I'm the president of BioCT. We are the trade organization for the life sciences industry for the state of Connecticut. Like to thank you for having me today. It's the first time I'm engaging, but hopefully not the last. Um, we are comprised of about two hundred and fifteen members, all focused on the state of Connecticut, not all in the state of Connecticut. It's everything from patient advocacy groups through academic institutions, through life sciences companies and everyone that touches life sciences in the state. I'm here today to talk about Senate Bill Eight, uh, what we know as, as price controls. And there are three components that, um, BioCT and the Government Affairs Committee that we represent are, are concerned about. And we're hoping that we can partner to fight this bill together because it's reaching the House floor now. So I appreciate you finding time for me today. Um, the three components that we find troubling, the first we call, uh, three forty B. This is federal legislation that the state of Connecticut is trying to implement state legislation around price controls. The challenge with three forty B is it's currently undergoing an overhaul on the federal level. Um, the intent of the bill, and we all applaud and desperately need the intent of the bill, is to lower the care of drug costs for patients. That's the original intent of the program and I think we can all agree that needs to happen. The challenge with the legislation is that's not actually what happened and we see that on the federal level. Um, what's happening is we actually don't know where the discounts are going. Um, it, it seems to be going more to the middlemen and studies have shown that none of these discounts and programs are actually benefiting the patient. So our challenge is we agree that we need to lower the cost of drugs to patients, but this isn't the way to do it. And can we work together to find a way to do it effectively because we agree it needs to happen? Um, there's two other components of the bill that we find challenging. One is on implementing a PDAP. So it would be a twenty-two-person price control board for the state of Connecticut. We saw that happen in eight other states. It's actually incredibly expensive. We estimate it would cost the state of Connecticut about two million dollars to do that during a non-budgetary cycle. And it's actually, again, not an effective way to lower the cost of drugs directly to patients. Um, and the third component of the bill that we find troubling is around Canadian importation. Um, so one, we're, we're actually not sure how that would work because Canada is not open to importing drugs to Connecticut based on conversations. Um, how do we control it? How do we make that happen? So I'm here really to partner on behalf of our entire industry because policy is our first and foremost, our first goal, with the first being access to patients. Um, and this bill is imminent, um, but we just don't feel that this is the way to actually benefit patients directly.
It is one of our topics today, you know? It's something I sent in testimony. So I will, I will talk to you, I will talk to you later about it.
Okay.
Contact me. And I'll explain to a lot of the other people.
Wonderful.
There's several of us on the board who are active, so.
Okay. We'd love to partner and fight this together. Thank you so much for having me.
Dominic.
Hello, my name's Dominic Cotton. Legislative act advocate, um, as well as, uh, the parent, spouse, brother of, uh, multiple family members with, uh, with different rare diseases. Uh, I know, uh, for me, it's, um, it's nice to finally get to this point. I think, uh, creating this rare disease advisory council is something that, uh, Leslie and I specifically have been working on for about ten years. Somewhere in that range. Uh, I'm very fortunate, uh, that, uh, I, I do a lot of advocacy for a lot of different groups that I'm involved with. Brain injury, rare disease, justice issues, housing issues. Uh, and a lot of what I try to create is relationships uh, with the different legislators, uh, so that we can be able uh, to strategize and, and get the issues that are being brought in front of you guys uh, forward and, and get people on board in order to get some of these things passed. I know in the past, I think, uh, I've done things right down to, uh, the last hours of what they call Cindy, the last, the last day of session, making sure certain bills got passed by consent, uh, which we're very fortunate for. Um, I'm just, uh, here to tell you that, um, I'm appreciative of the fact um, that we have so many, uh, experts uh, and the level of credibility, uh, that you guys have as a group, uh, to legislators um, has really gonna pull together, um, in the upcoming sessions and as, as, as get to speak on, uh, uh, on the different issues that are coming up before our community. Just, um, how well this is like started off and how well it's going and just, uh, how, how credible and important you guys are, uh, obviously to our community. So I just wanted to say.
Well, before we get our meeting, do you want to see if there's anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, we haven't.
Are there any other people on the call that I've missed or would like to speak like Pam or Kelly? Kate, any of you like to speak? Okay, go ahead, Pam.
Um, my name's Pamela Johnson and I, um, work for Hartford Healthcare as a research auditor, but my passion is rare disease. Um, I have a rare disease called hereditary angioedema as well as my twelve-year-old son. Um, I was in clinical trials at Boston Children's Hospital for eleven years. And that shaped why I work in research today. I'm very excited. Thank you, Leslie, for, um, inviting me to this meeting. And I've been, um, working for a long time advocating for rare diseases, so I'm super excited about this committee. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kelly? Kate?
If we see everybody who's on. There are twenty-two people on.
Twenty-two people. Okay. Have I missed anybody who would like to speak? Okay, if there's no more speakers at this point, then we'll move on to our meeting and Michelle will take over.
All right. Well, you guys, thank you so much for everybody who came, everybody. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think I'm big one. It has been so amazing to hear, but you know, not everybody could stay, but, um, really, um, it has been just fantastic. It has been so amazing to hear, but not everybody could stay, but really, it has been just fantastic to hear this. I think it's really given us, really helped us shape what we're doing for next. I think there were some, there were, there were the comment, I missed, it was real quick. Can you see the comments?
Oh, yeah, so from the chat, Kelly said that she's on the phone with a doctor, but it's free to speak at the June meeting.
Okay, good.
All right, we'll look forward to having that. Okay, so are you able to pull up the agenda?
Free share?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit lost here. I was thinking, actually, how I planned and what I was gonna do required me to be honest. Not that well at all. We will, so we'll get the agenda up, we'll, we'll have everybody, we'll have everybody reintroduce themselves and we'll get started. And while we're waiting to pull up the agenda, I think we can get, we can start. So Phil Spencer Manson, I'm a clinical journalist here at Yale, and I am currently the chair, soon to be vice, our co-chair with Leslie.
Okay. I'm Leslie Bennett. I'm the rare disease advocate and currently the vice chair.
Craig Miller, I'm the director of immunology and respiratory disease research at Borngren Pharmaceuticals, ARDEC member, serving as a research scientist focused on rare disease.
Colleen.
Colleen Brunetti, I am the adult rare disease patient representative to the ARDEC.
Joanna.
I am Joanna Gal. I'm a physician scientist, pediatric hemok physician at Connecticut Children's, and a researcher on pediatric solid tumors and other rare diseases at the Jackson Laboratory. And I am an ARDEC member as a scientific community.
Emily. Who else? Oh, Jim?
Yes, I'm Jim Rollins. I am the president and CEO of the Sickle Cell Association of Connecticut. I was a former vice president here, I don't give a hospital. And I built the first Sickle Cell Adult Program via, while I was in place. I've also served on the National Board of the NWSUP, representing Sickle Cell. And I've also served on the Sickle Cell Association National Board as the chair.
We'd like it if you would, but that's all right.
You don't have to. We'd love to have you come up here.
Yeah, Dr. Kevin, are you on still?
Yes, I am. Dr. Kevin Felice, I represent Hospital for Special Care. I'm a neuromuscular neurologist who runs the Center for Excellence for the ALS Association and the Muscular Dystrophy Association.
Dorian, are you still on the line?
I am.
Okay, great.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dorian Long, and I work at the Connecticut Department of Social Services, which administers a variety of programs. One of the most interests likely will be the Medicaid program. And I also brought a partner in crime, who I guess will be speaking about Katie Beckett Weaver and later Paul Chase.
Thank you. Miriam, are you on?
Miriam is not on. She had to go to negotiations, but Fisher did appoint a, another representative with more subject matter expertise.
Okay.
Adrian, are you on?
Oh, Adrian. I see Adrian, yep.
Yes, I am. I'm Adrian. I'm Adrian Manning. I'm the division director for the newborn screening program. I oversee both the laboratory and follow-up. And I have just been appointed by the commissioner to serve on the ARDEC, so I'm happy to do it.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any ARDEC members that I've missed? Okay, I believe we have a quorum. Yeah, we do, we have a forum.
Wonderful, okay. So I think we just, Leslie and I had talked a little bit, we have, we were very fortunate and blessed here to have somebody who wanted to speak and willing to share their stories and, and their interests. So we may not get, we, we make lots of our couple of issues of the, the agenda and just kind of put them to next week in order to have gotten, I think, to see everybody. But we'll, we're gonna really focus today on legislative updates because that is the most pressing matter. So we did the purpose of the meetings, we received this, we received the input from the public. That's what's done. Again, thank you for everybody who talked. And then we will talk, I think the Katie Beckett waivers and some of these other surveys, new business, et cetera, will be important to go through. Okay? Do we need to approve the February minutes?
Yes, we do.
So we're gonna, next thing is the February, the February meeting minutes were put out. Anybody have any comments, questions, changes to the February minutes? Somebody want to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Okay, great. Okay, we have, we have, that's, I think the minutes are approved from February.
No, we didn't take a vote.
Oh, oh, sorry.
You just say, but if I object.
They made the jax, thank you.
No, the objects are perfect.
Yeah. All right, they're approved, nobody's objecting. Everyone holds your peace. Greg, I'm gonna learn the second job here. All right, the public comments was just what we already did.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we're, I think, one of the things here, we're gonna do something relatively more condensed, but the update on the bylaws. You guys wanna give us an update just where we're at and what, what you need from us, maybe?
Okay, the bylaws, we're putting those on hold. I'm gonna ask you to table them until next month.
Okay.
In part because I've been tied up working in the legislature on legislative issues and Colleen and Craig have been away. So we'll get together in the next, get this banked out for everybody. So that's put off for a month.
That's perfect, okay. Legislative update, I, I think this is the meat of where we need to be, just given the timing of where we are and how many of these bills are going up. And I also think, again, we had talked about this at last meeting, there is a lot of disapproval and fruency here about how nappy some of us are about what our, our, what, what we can do to support this legislation compared to other people. So highly the members who have more experience and more expertise in this have agreed to kind of help us, the rest of us. Like, I will say, us, least, least me, me plus my husband like to join this group into becoming more effective advocates for the legislation. I think a lot of us particularly who are more kind of clinical science-based may not have as much experience with it, so.
That's true. I mean, there, there are several of us who advocate, you know, at the legislature, and I'm one of them.
Right.
I know Colleen does, so does Mary Cruz, so Jim has been involved as well.
So a lot of them with scientific backgrounds as well, but so there's a big thing here.
But we will, we'll, we'll hold its sessions probably July, August, teaching you about what we need to do, how a bill's passed, all that stuff, everything else. Right now, we're in the last phase of the short session, so this is crunch time.
So that's what we have in general.
That's what we're, I sent you, I sent everybody a thing yesterday about the bills that we're watching, four bills that we're actively involved in. And that's Medicaid, House Bill 5367, which is Medicaid coverage of rapid whole genome sequencing for critically ill infants. Senate Bill 206, the Katie Beckett waiver program, and Senate Bill 175, which is funding for the ARDEC. We were also involved in Senate Bill 306, which is biomarker testing. With the exception of the biomarker testing, the other three are being held up in negotiations. The governor has set, we have a budget. He doesn't want to move beyond that, and so we're, everybody's scrambling to find funding. We went to the point, we went to the point where we'll be sent, well, Senator Anwar, the head of the Public Health Committee, who wrote Senate Bill 175, Senator Looney, and several other leaders of the CGA, and asked them to remove the $50,000 funding from the bill, hoping that we can get the rest of the bill through because the, the key thing for us is the language. The language gives us, we were only given the ability to identify funds. We need to be able to accept and utilize those laws.
Yeah.
But apparently that language is holding up right now. I was hoping that Miriam was here because she had mentioned that the Lupus Foundation had used a nonprofit to get access to funding, but I will find out about that. I, I have a website where a group of us who are Connecticut rare disease advocates, we will go through if necessary and make that a nonprofit so that we could fund this.
So how we make that, so I, I'm, I'm logistically lost. How will we make ourselves like?
We won't make it us. It'll be an independent nonprofit. I have, I have a website where there's a group of us, the people who were involved in the legislation for this, we're basically a court group.
Right.
And we advocate for certain laws, so we've been doing that for a while. We set up a website about a year ago.
Okay, cool.
And so that could become, as Connecticut rare disease advocates, I'll send you the webs, we haven't done a lot since last year, but I'll send you the website. That's something we could turn into a nonprofit and maybe channel funds through, make donations to DPH, for instance, for the website, specifically for that. I know Lupus did something like that, so maybe we can do that as well. We'll figure out a way to do it, but we're kind of held up on that bill because of the negotiations, because it will involve funding.
Gotcha, so let's see.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Just so I understand, because like, yeah, I remember two aspects with the original bill. One was the language, which precluded fundraising for us. And, and so we have a huge challenge then in terms of how we would, you know, we talked about this from day one, you know, how do we?
We can't even solicit grants right now. I mean, I would have been approaching VI for a minute. We have other companies within the state that have said that they are willing to help fund us. Not everybody has to give us, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, but, you know, we can get those little things to fund a website.
So priority number one was to change the, change the wording so that we can enable this. And then a second was, we had a specific then budget component, but that is a tricky one, so.
We've removed it. Michelle and I wrote to them immediately, realized what was the problem, and asked them to remove it.
Gotcha.
So it's been removed, apparently, I think, for the language, but we're still stuck up because we wouldn't be getting funding. So it's one of those negotiation things. All of these bills are held up to patients. The.
Leslie.
Yep.
Does the Walk for Rare Diseases provide any funding for ARDEC?
We could. We could ask them to eventually, but right now they're not because we can't solicit funding.
Yeah, the issue is can't solicit funding until the language changes, yeah. So that's a question, what you were saying, which is, but are, are we talking about using this web, website instead of the nonprofit? If, this is, this is our contingency plan. If we can't get this through, that must.
Yeah, we would have the, I think the nonprofit would actually put up the website for the ARDEC, host it, and then DPH will probably send over a link with something like that. I forget how Lupus did it, but I can talk to the people.
Lupus is a state, part of a state agency?
They were, they had, Lupus was under DPH or.
Adrian, I can say, I think you need to be like kind of involved in this conversation because the question, I, I think the question here is deep, if we, if we, if we can get this language through, who cares?
We get the language through, we don't have to worry about the nonprofit, but this is another option.
I think this is gonna be for you to kind of figure out, can, like, can we go to Plan B, right, from, from the DPH, so that you're representing DPH now? Yay!
Some of them we know.
Let us then set up, and Leslie's gonna correct me here when I say the wrong thing, and make it sound better. But can we set up, it's kind of like.
Independent, not independent nonprofit.
Where we would be the independent nonprofit that you would.
No, we could all be members of it.
Which we would all be members, but, but, and we would, we would do the website, but it wouldn't really be DPH anymore. Like, like, it's kind of a backdoor in.
This is Miriam's and.
I know, I'll talk to Miriam, and there's a couple other people at DPH I can talk to. I don't think you are involved in this. I can also talk to the Lupus people. Because this is where it came up. It was a, it was a suggestion by Miriam initially, and then we decided to go. So it's, it's, it's an option, but if we can't get the language through this year to change so that we could get funding, you know, just even grants, then this is something we're gonna have to do.
So the nonprofit would get the grants.
The nonprofit would get the grants, and the nonprofit would use the money directly to that.
To make like the website.
To make the website, maintain it, yeah, and all that.
Leslie, just also, because I'm similar to Michelle, like naive and all this, what's the timeline before we would have clarity on if the?
By next week.
By next week, okay.
We're in the last phase. It's first week in May. They're done the first week of May.
So everything that happens, and, and what, I guess the other question I would say here is, what can we do, like?
Well, this is what we're gonna talk about. We can send letters like the rapid whole genome sequencing.
Okay.
This is not gonna really impact the budget. It's being held up because initially there was a. There's, it, it's gonna be like 500 kits is roughly it. So there'll be an outlay of $7,000 per kid, so it's like $700,000. But that'll be recouped in the savings that they get from shaving off every day. I mean, they don't.
Who's paying for, oh, Medicaid, medicine from Medicaid, okay.
Medicaid.
Only Medicaid, so this would not impact, like Blue Cross Blue Shield wouldn't have to cover it.
No, but what's happened, what's been happening nationwide, and we've seen it, is the, the minute that Medicaid approves.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah.
Insurance, Anthem will jump on board, Blue Cross Blue Shield will jump on board the next day. They've done it in 17 states.
Yeah, 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 no, no, it's okay.
And this is something that CMS is really pushing, so that's what we need to, to do. So I'll, I'll send you all information on that.
Logistical question about that. So right now, if I were to genetic testing on anybody in the hospital, it rolls into their hospitalization. Like, like, it's not, you don't get a separate fee for this, like, I'm not even.
No, what, what the issue is, is normally it's DRGs, yes, it's in, it's all rolled in. But CMS wants this so badly because it has been demonstrated it saves a lot of money.
Right.
That they want it so badly that right now they are approving the application or the request to modify the state's DRG program
Got it, okay.
to spin out just the cost of the rapid whole genome sequencing.
So that would be in addition to whatever the daily cost is for that thing.
Yeah. So that would be paid for separately. The problem that's, that CMS is seeing is in pediatric care, neonatal and pediatric ICU code care ranges from $3,000 to $20,000 per day.
The end and end. So 3,000 is on the really low side.
That is, and it's not, not here in New England, we don't see it, it's like.
No, I don't know where, where, exactly, 1,000 is what I know.
These kids are piling up bills of 100,000, over 100,000 dollars every week. They're in there, every day we can shave off.
Right, right, right.
Get a diagnosis, they're no longer going to the ICU, they can manage differently. So that's the big thing. So this is something that, it's a push by CMS. It's been a push nationwide where they've asked advocates to come in and work on this. So that's one of the reasons I'm so involved in it. Kelly is one of the kids, my daughter Kelly is one of the kids who would have fallen into this. And it would have helped tremendously. Even if the parents don't get a diagnosis, those kids are flagged as having a rare disease.
Right.
And that helps them tremendously, so that's one.
So, so let me ask you a question about, is, like, last I think I heard about this, it's six months and under, that's still true?
No, it's a year and under.
Year and under.
Year and under right now. Some of the states have expanded to all childhood, because they realize the undiagnosed are a major driver of pediatric healthcare costs.
Right.
But right now we're pushing for a year and under. And that seems to be working, and there are guardrails. The American College of Medical Genetics has, has a set format for the kids who can be tested, and that's what a lot of states have adopted. So it doesn't really have to be the commissioner going through and setting up everything. So that's one. I will send you all a letter, asking you to send the governor and everybody else and the departments.
And so why is it?
Funding.
Is that, is that true for everything we're gonna talk about?
Everything we're talking about is funding.
So who makes, sorry, I know, I know I'm asking a lot of questions. Who makes that hap, like, who makes the funding happen?
It's negotiations right now. They're trying to figure out. Dominic, do you want to explain the budget?
But it is helpful. Like, you understand what the problem is, then I can figure out better than what to say.
We have a set budget.
All right. You got a two-year cycle. First, first year, they make up the budget for the two-year periods. The second year, which is a short session, they make budget adjustments.
Or whatever, they already budgeted, but then no more money comes in.
Right, and so what they did was probably about like six years ago, they put up financial guardrails. Certain monies that would come into the budget kind of get put off to the side, and they go up to pay down like our pension debt. So what they're doing right at the moment is they're using ARCA funds and anything else that was kind of like unspent.
What's the ARCA fund?
American Rescue Plan. That's from COVID.
Okay, oh, it's COVID money, got it.
So what they're doing right now is they're, they're trying to see what money they have left over, what things that they can put that towards. Usually what happens is the appropriation committee comes out with a new budget, which is the legislator's version of what they want. And then the governor comes in and they negotiate. That's why on a short session, it's easier to get bills passed that don't have a dollar amount attached to it. Because they don't affect or change the budget, so the likelihood that they'll get passed.
Is higher.
Is a lot higher. So they got like 600 different bills that they're, so some things like die out of the bind. Some things come back and get like redone. So like your newborn screening one, even though it's got like, you know, I guess $8 per like, or $300 and some odd $1,000, it kind of got killed in the appropriations committee because of that.
10:30 off.
It might be, and it might not be. It depends on the nego. And it might not be. It's depends on the negotiations at the final end. A lot of times you don't find out what's in the actual budget when you read through, like there's an implementer, which is. Uh how they're gonna spend the money. A lot of times you have to like scan through that right at, right as they're going through. It's about a thousand pages long. And you look for your specific like bills as you're going through. So they might be negotiated. If not, then you have to start your kind of process of like getting people uh involved. And getting this on next year's budget, which is fully like wide open.
Wide open.
And and essentially everyone's bill, like on the short session can, has to have like budget, budgetary component. Uh every bill that comes up in next session.
Which not.
Does not. Right, and can be introduced by like any legislator. So that's where like everybody gets there. That will start January.
So what do they do between May to?
So part-time legislature. It's not a full-time legislature.
So they, they don't, they don't work at all?
Well, they still work.
For special session, there's cer- certain uh committees that will continue to be uh that have certain specific regulatory. Uh things, or they might get pulled in where uh like if a committee of cognizance, so like say if you. Had the Katie Beckett waiver and they had to send off information to CMS in order to get things changed. They would have the appropriations and uh Human Services would meet together. Sign off on it, and this way they could send it over to like CMS.
Who's involved in the negotiations?
The governor. President of the Senate. Martin Mooney, House Speaker, Matt Ritter, jury leaders, Bob Duff. Candelaure.
So the leadership of.
At this point, you're better off writing specifically to like leadership, saying.
Get this, get this through.
This is, this is like the important, like stuff of our community. Very important.
So you're here, so.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Okay, that was, that was super helpful from, from Bolsey. So it sounds like right now. Uh the impetus is for us as, as, as a ARDA. But like, but right now, it's just, it's like individually to write to the leadership and ask them to push through here.
Yes, individual members can write.
Okay. And then I, I guess, I don't know if we have time to do, but should we be doing stuff as a, as a group? And should the ARDA be as?
Not, not on this, because several of our members are. Parts of like Adrian, Jen.
That's true.
We can't ask them to participate.
That makes sense. That's, that's super helpful.
So it's, we send these in, we send in letters individually.
Okay.
Asking for help on this and people, key people to, to contact will be like Martin Mooney, Matt Ritter. If you have uh.
Can we, can we send, can we get this sent out?
Yeah, well, I will, I'll send it out afterwards. Uh Mayor Caruso is, is very close to and Candelaure, who's the minority leader of the house. So these are key people that we have direct contact with, we can talk to.
Okay.
And we can tell, explain to them why we want these, you know, it added. Um Adrian. Are you still on? Cause I was gonna ask you about the um.
Yeah.
The muscular dystrophy, uh Duchenne muscular dystrophy. Um, what was the budget that uh? You guys attached to that? Was it three hundred and fifty thousand?
Um. Yeah, so we did put together a budget, um but um. For, for the testing based on um supplies, um fiscal, fiscal impact statement and everything. Um. At the end of that, I have to go through and actually see what we did submit. Amelia, do you know how much that was? I have to get back to you on that.
Do you have the bill number?
It's five, three, two, one.
Yeah, five, three, two, one.
I could see OFAs but not DPHs.
Yeah.
Um but in uh in the OFA uh fiscal note, I can see three seventy-six K.
Okay.
Three hundred twenty-seven and three hundred. Three hundred twenty-eight, uh and hopefully Adrian can pull up DPH's submission.
Yeah. So I think I had the part of it, but I don't think I got the final, because it went to OPM and.
Do you have any idea of how close it might be on the RUSP? Will it be considered this year?
Yeah, they're, they actually are voting. Um I believe they're voting May eighth or wait, May ninth and tenth, they have a meeting. Uh Secretary's Advisory Committee is meeting uh May ninth and tenth, and they are expected to vote on it. So there's a, um, there's a chance that it may be voted on, um, and it could go. Um I know that there's support.
Um, I know.
Uh so. I don't really, it's hard to read where. You know.
Get information that I don't. I mean, we're both involved in this, and sometimes you, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I thought, you know, uh first time around with, with Crab A, I, I expected that it was gonna go. And I was surprised that it didn't. So, you know, this is, this is one that. I'm not making a prediction. Um but, you know, this is also something that um. We have, we do have um. We have a pro, applied for uh the PAPEL grant, um it's a HERSA grant. So there, there are things that we have put into place. As, as sort of preparation from our standpoint, that um. You know, we're planning if, if things do happen. So um we are um. Moving along that if, if the, if DMD does end up um being. Voted favorably um to be added to the RUSP, once it is, yeah, once it is signed officially. On, onto the RUSP, um then, then we have to go through our processes here. Um it's dependent on OPM, the way that the language is written in, in the legislative language. Um so, you know, this is all. Part of how it works here at DPH. Um, our processes here, but you know, this is. Something that we have, we've been. Aware of and we are planning ahead. Yes, yes, we, we aren't, we. Um I think I've, you know, said this before, I don't, I don't like being reactive. I wanna be proactive and, and looking ahead at what could be happening. So.
Well, that's why I was asking you about, you know, how, how you're feeling about it with the RUSP, because I think that would. Probably give a little bit of relief then to the uh Duchenne, Duchenne muscular dystrophy population here in the state that they know that it's coming.
Yeah, this, I mean, this seems to be an active, active uh period of um, of the, you know. Of disorders being nominated and, and added to the RUSP. So um we're all newborn screening. Um laboratories and programs are paying attention to what's going on um at the national level. Um and HERSA at the, you know, federal level for funding and, and adding, you know, and. And providing funding to programs for adding disorders, they are also paying attention. Uh the Association of Public Health Laboratories, the CDC. Um so this is something that everybody is, is actively paying attention to as well. So. You know, here in Connecticut, we, we worked hard to make sure that. Um there was mention of the RUSP within our legislative language. So.
That it, that it really helped. So yeah, we appreciate that.
It was a recent discussion about the uh issue of CRISPR.
Yep.
And CRISPR has done something with gene, cell and gene therapies. Uh it's a big news with Vertex and Advisor, et cetera, et cetera. Costs will be the patient for this hopefully cure. Hopefully cure one point two million dollars. We, at one point in time, I did a, a little workshop that Leslie attended. That had some of the researchers in the room. And some of the individuals from the School of Medicine, et cetera, within the uh. E, EMAC Oncology side of it. And we was all set relative to dealing with standard ANOAH relative to, because Medicaid. Is the principal vehicle for, for sick and subsidies. Seventy percent. Which made it prohibitive. Um at that point in time, we were working with ANOAH. And with um, I think another person, Pat Dillon, maybe one on that particular committee. Who hopefully uh drive it through the uh LOB. CMS came down the road and has said that um they're willing to underwrite it with demonstration grant. The whole one point two, whatever happened to be. Um and I think there would be something, some cost sharing. So what the intent was. Was for everyone we stayed to sign up for the uh cost sharing demonstration grant. By doing a, a uh standing walk on the LOI, which is not binding. And so, you know, Leslie and I um have been working in, in a parallel relative to getting the legislative move. Particularly the uh, the uh, the actual GIPIN, sign off on, on health strategies. So we completed that task with Dr. Chris, I think he's Blackishana, something like that, he's the, you know. And so we're waiting to see if in fact we get included in the demonstration grant. What happened was that Massachusetts got out of ahead of us. Because they're basically really academically and medically. But we're waiting to see what, what goes on here. So I wanna make sure we board this discussion in case something falls through.
But that's not gonna be addressed this legislative session, Jim.
You mean the CMS side or the?
It's, it's not a bill before our.
Oh, no, I know, I know that. Um I know that. We're working on the CMS side.
Yeah, I know, and that's something, we're, that's, we're, right now, we're talking with the legislative update about things or before the Connecticut judge.
I understand that, but I just wanna make sure we board this discussion so that.
We will. We'll do that. Is it okay if we table it right now and do that um next month, May?
Yeah, this is um, I just wanna get it on the table.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. We'll talk to you about that uh for the May, May discussion.
Yeah, put on these gender.
Um I, I just wanna go quickly over the other bills that were um. Following, one was um. The Senate Bill one uh is a health and safety for Connecticut residents. The reason we're following that is it um. Has a section that addresses uh Parkinson's and a Parkinson's database. And one of our legislators has just come through and announced that he has Parkinson's. So. Um this is one of the bills that we're, we're following for the community. We're hoping will pass. Another one is Senate Bill eight, you heard Joe before, talking about the three sections that they objected. The one that has the biggest impact on our community are the farm, the uh prescription uh drug affordability boards. A lot of them use um. Tools.
Yeah.
That are like the qualities, the quality of your life, that really do not take into account for anybody who's a senior. Disabled, has a chronic illness. I mean, they really hit our, our community very hard. And a lot of these will end up using an organization up in Massachusetts called Iser. Iser always reviews new drugs as they come out. Their findings are preliminary before they really even hit the market and um. There are very few rare disease drugs that they ever approve, and a lot of states are starting to use them. The problem is just denying access to our population. So. These boards are made up mostly of health economists, pharma economic experts. These are not people, yeah, and they never include a prescribing physician or a patient.
That's great.
And they're trying to get around that by having uh a consulting board made up of. The, the physicians and patients. It's not, it's not, and so the, one of the reasons we really have to oppose this is the makeup of the board. It has to have at least a patient and one prescribing physician.
Seems like they should have mostly people who actually take care of patients, or actually understand the patient population or what the actual impact is.
We should ban, and one of the things that organizations like um any uh the ALS organization, I was talking yesterday about this with them. Um I would ask that we next month or a month after, do a joint meeting with them to talk about this. Because these boards really severely impact.
It's something we have to kill this now. This, what I'm hearing from you is that if, if we don't kill it now.
We, we have to write. So this is one of the ones that I'll be asking you to all, you know, uh and it, it's a governor's bill, but it's like, it's well-intentioned. It's just not practical.
We are not giving insulin where, you know, a million people take it a year, which I mean, I think, I agree, it's important.
I'm just gonna cover the last two quickly. The other one was the Medicaid coverage for biomarker testing. That has passed the Senate. We just need to ask that it be called in the House, and it will go through. Um it had no, no fiscal note on it. And then uh healthcare access for persons with disability, what this is talking about is um. Making sure that clinics have at least one room that's accessible to people with wheelchairs.
That's not a thing, all right?
No, it's. But it's like, I mean, I, and I used to go through this with Kelly all the time, so I know exactly what they're talking about. You know, you walk into these facilities and then a lot of times they, they won't have a scale that will accommodate. And a lot of times they tell me, you have to stand in. I'm like, I can't do that. I have arthritis and, you stand. How the heck's expecting to handle, you hold her. Well, we can't, that's, it don't. Medical liability for you, right? So this is one. It's also held up in negotiation. So that's basically.
Cost neutral, right, for them?
It has a cost attached to it, a couple hundred thousand per year, because it's the buying of equipment. It would force these clinics to buy equipment. And then anybody who's buying new equipment, the new equipment would have to be handicapped accessible. You know, ta- examination tables that go up and down. So people could get on them, you know, more easily. Even for the elderly, this is something that helps. So.
But, but, but would the clinics take that?
They should, yeah. But it's just, it's one of those things. So, and there's, there's money attached to, so those are all things. But those are things. I'll send that around after the meeting. It's uh, well, probably tomorrow.
Three forty program into the. And the CHA.
Yeah.
It saved us in the mental, no more dollars. You know, six or seven figures.
Yeah. So th- those are all things, but I'll, I'll send this around quickly tomorrow. With the sake of time, because we're fifteen minutes now, I'd like to move on. So kick to the Katie Beckett.
Yes, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Uh Chase, if you're, uh Paul, are you still on?
Yes, hi, how are you? I, I've learned a lot today. Uh I, yeah, and, and I did hear Katie Beckett mentioned a few times before, and I know there is pending legislation. I just quickly. I'm gonna do just a really brief overview of what the waiver is and what waivers are, and then talk more specifically about Katie Beckett and what's going on in our agency with it. And um, you know, how it relates directly to the hope that we all have that we can eventually expand access to the waiver. But, so I work for the Department of Social Services in our Community Options Unit. We oversee all of the state's home and community-based services programs. Um of which we have ten Medicaid waivers. They're called nineteen fifteen C waivers. Nineteen fifteen C just being the section in the Social Security Act that authorizes the state to administer to them. Connecticut's a little bit rare in that it has ten different um nineteen fifteen C waivers. I think that's, we have more. Waivers than any other state uh in the country. A lot of other states operate a little differently using eleven fifteen waivers, or they have bigger waivers. But what we have is ten different waivers that target, target populations, specific target populations. Um and what the waivers essentially allow us to do is they allow us to waive certain things. That's why we call them waivers. One of them being like eligibility criteria that would normally apply to everybody else on Medicaid. And the other thing we can do is we can. Target that population within that waiver for services that are unavailable to anybody else um uh, on Medicaid in the Medicaid State Plan in Connecticut. As I say that, Katie Beckett is our most unique waiver in that. What Katie Beckett allows uh its participants to do is simply access Medicaid. So there are, there, oh, there's only one waiver service. So something is either a waiver service or a state plan service when you're talking about Medicaid. State plan being what's comparable and available to everybody, and waiver services are only available to people on that waiver. With Katie Beckett, um there's only one waiver service that's available, and that's the Nursing Case Management Service. And essentially what that, all that is, is uh, uh every six months, assessment and reassessment to determine functional eligibility to continue on the program. So there really are no ongoing waiver services that are being provided by the program. What it is doing is providing access for individuals that would otherwise not be eligible for Medicaid. Um it allows them to access Medicaid. So Katie Beckett uh serves uh our medically fragile population, uh age birth to twenty-two. Um so. They, it's, it's physical disabilities and they may or may not have a, a co-occurring developmental disability. There is no list of, of approved qualifying conditions. It's just, individuals are assessed based on, you know, their physical need. Um as their spot comes up on the waitlist. um, as their spot comes up on the waitlist. Um, it's ages birth to twenty-two, like I mentioned. Currently, we have three hundred and twenty-nine active participants with a waitlist of three hundred and twelve. I think we're approved for three hundred and twenty. I, I don't know the exact number we're approved for. It's right in that ballpark. We do have some revert, uh, reserve capacity for people that come off of our Money Follows a Person Program, which are individuals that are institutionalized and transitioned back out to the community. Um, but from the waitlist, there's a certain amount of spots and they're only filled with attrition, right? So you see the legislation that's pending now, uh, that's, that wants to add more spots, okay? Um, the interesting thing about Katie Beckett, and I've been working with this program now for about ten years. Um, and I've talked to hundreds of families that are waiting for the program, that have accessed the program, that have transitioned off the program. Um, the, the, the thing about Katie Beckett that is, that is tough, you know, to deal with is that we know, one thing, there's a couple of things. Um, we know that the expenditures for individuals on Katie Beckett, even though for somebody that utilizes the Medicaid, uh, quite a bit, um, the average expenditures are, are not that high relative to, uh, other Medicaid participants. Um, so the average waiver cost per year, you know, for that one waiver service is only two hundred and thirty-seven dollars per participant. Um, but the, the average cost of the Medicaid services that they utilize, and this is where you get, uh, down to the money. It's about fifty-one thousand dollars per participant. So that's when you say, uh, gentlemen spoke earlier about the fifty spots and what the cost would be. It's essentially, we look at a spot and we average it out, you know, what, what we believe that's going to cost based on, um, based on utilization. And we know essentially what, so there are some consumers that utilize quite a bit of services, right? So once you have Medicaid, you have access to, to home and community-based services such as skilled nursing, um, home health aides, uh, PTOT, all those services. And a lot of people that utilize the Medicaid utilize quite a bit. At the same time, and I've spoken to, like I said, hundreds of families, there are a lot of people active on the program that don't utilize the Medicaid at all. They keep it as a catastrophic backup insurance to their private insurance. That's so unique with our waiver population because for every other waiver that we have that serves all of our other targeted populations, if they're on that program, they're utilizing a lot of the home and community-based services and the unique waiver services that are available. Whereas Katie Beckett is, to my knowledge, the, the only waiver where we have a, a, a large portion of participants that aren't even using Medicaid at all. They just have it, right? Well, that's good and I'm glad they have it and we want them to have it. Uh, but I've spoken with so many families that, that struggle with the decision to take that spot, knowing they're not going to utilize the Medicaid because they know how many people are waiting that really need the services that Medicaid may provide. Um, so it really is, it's something that people struggle with. And the families that I've worked with over the years are amazing. They understand, they've waited, they understand how, how impactful having the services can be. Um, so i- it's always a difficult conversation. Um, but once they get that spot, it, you know, I, I don't encourage anyone to give it up. You don't know. You know, but right now you may have private insurance, you may have means that are covering, uh, the needs that you have, but you don't know if that's going to be the case down the road. Um, but once you, if you were to give up that spot, um, you would go back at the end of the waitlist if you wanted to come back and, and, you know, three hundred and nineteen people I said were on the waitlist. That's a few years. You're waiting three to four years at this time, from the time you get on the waitlist, um, to access the program. Um, so what also is unique in Connecticut is that we operate, and the gentleman that spoke before mentioned this, is that we're one of the, well, we're in the minority as far as operating a waiver for Katie Beckett. Um, there are, a majority of the states operate Katie Beckett as a state plan option. It's called the TEFRA option. It's, it was created in the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, I think in two thousand and six, that allows uh, you to create a state plan option, essentially create a coverage group that serves disabled individuals under the age of eighteen and cover them. Um, you know, if you're, and that, that's one, again, one of the unique things about Katie Beckett is we're allowing right now with the waiver, and it would be the same way if we adopted the state plan option. We're looking only at the financial, the finances of the individual that's applying and not the family. So right now, if you're under the age of eighteen or under the age of twenty-one in the state of Connecticut and you're applying for Medicaid, unless you have a disability designation and you're eighteen or older, but if you're twenty-one and younger and you don't have a disability designation and you want to apply for Medicaid, you have to apply for Husky A. And Husky A or Husky B are coverages that factor in the, uh, income of the family of the parents, right? So when we look at somebody for Katie Beckett eligibility and they're given a spot on the program, we're only looking at the income and the assets to participant, okay? And, um, a lot of times that's nothing. We're generally, you know, many times we're talking about children. And then many times if they do have assets or income, they have them, uh, accounted for in certain Medicaid qualifying trusts or able accounts, special needs trusts, things like that. So it, it is, it's a, it's a, it's a blessing that we have that, but there are other states that are approaching it differently. Um, and I think Connecticut is the only remaining state that operates a waiver for Katie Beckett. Um, the reason, and I, and I know we're on a time crunch, so I'm just speeding ahead here, but the, the reason really, the thing that I've done in my research, uh, finding out why we as a state have not moved in another direction is that Connecticut is one of twelve remaining states that has with CMS a designation as a two oh nine B state as opposed to an SSI state. In an SSI state, if you're eligible for SSI, you are automatically eligible for Medicaid. Connecticut elects historically to be a two oh nine B state, which has a more restrictive criteria than SSI when determining eligibility for Medicaid. Um, essentially what that means is in Connecticut, if you are under the age of eighteen, for Medicaid purposes, Connecticut does not consider you disabled, regardless if you have a disability or not. So from a Medicaid perspective, nobody under eighteen is, is disabled. Therefore, we do not have a coverage group um, that, that exists that would cover disabled people under the age of eighteen. Once you hit eighteen, if you have Social Security, if you have SSI, then you can qualify for Medicaid on your own, independent of your family and your parents. So, you know, even though Katie Beckett waiver goes up to twenty-two, one thing that we do work to do is contact the participants when they turn eighteen, and if they have it, SSI, uh, we, we ask them if they are willing to transition off of the waiver to open up a spot for somebody else because they can now access Medicaid and get all the same services without needing the waiver. Um, so, you know, when I hear that we have legislation to expand spots, every time we hear that, and I'm speaking, uh, you know, as a DSS employee, um, it's, it's sort of a, a contradiction, a juxtaposition because personally, uh, the staff that work with the program are, are elated every time there's legislation to, to expand spots because we would love to erase the waitlist overnight if we could. Um, as an executive branch agency, DSS's answer is always going to be, if it's not in the governor's budget, we're always going to be in opposition of any legislation that opposes an expansion to a waiver if it's not in the governor's budget already. So we're on paper in opposition, uh, personally, and, and, you know, from a, from a perspective of working with these families and working with these programs, we are all, you know, we're all in support of that. Um, what I've seen in my years within, and you guys were just talking about legislative advocacy, so it's a, a good segue. In all my years working in these programs, the only time that there ever is, uh, expansions on these programs, um, to these populations that jet, you know, desperately need these spots on these waitlisted waivers, is it's always just born out of advocacy. Um, and, and, you know, we have a lot of our, our populations that we serve on waivers, whether it be brain injury or developmental, intellectual disability, autism, that have, uh, that have a lot of advocacy, loud advocacy. And, and they get, you know, they, just this past year or last year, autism was given a couple hundred spots on their waiver. Um, and that's the only time that we see movement happen with these programs is when there's external advocacy. So that's important. Anytime I get a chance to tell anybody that cares, uh, that, that has the potential to advocate from, from outside, um, that's, that's what I do. Um, so I don't know if there's, if I missed anything, if anybody has any, let me see if there's any, anything I missed here. Um, so really, I mean, with three hundred and nineteen people, you know, there's a certain dollar value and that's what it comes down to is the dollars. There's a certain dollar value that would be attached with eliminating the waitlist. Um, I, I don't know from a perspective of, uh, what would be the, the path of least resistance? Would it be to get more spots approved on the waiver or to go the other direction and try to do a state plan Medicaid amendment and adopt that, that TEFRA option uh, to try to make Katie Beckett a state plan covered service and create a new coverage group? So it doesn't have to be a, a waiver with a waitlist. Because once it's a state plan option, once it's a state plan service, there cannot be a waitlist for services.
Can I just make a comment?
Yep.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Yes, uh, if, if I, uh, thank you, that was very helpful. Um, I'm the grandfather of, of a granddaughter who has a terminal disease, right? And the, uh, substitute language for the bill specifically mentions two slots for the, for the disease. Um, I just want to ask a favor. When the numbers are, and, and the numbers relatively are small, right, versus the entire state budget? But when the numbers are being spoken about, can we try to talk about the net cost to the state? Because you mentioned fifty-something thousand and that's without the, the total portion being pulled out, right? So that the net Connecticut is about half of that.
Right, right. Any medic, yes, we get fifty percent matching from the federal government for any of our waiver programs. So you're right. So, uh, the utilization, total utilization being around fifty-one thousand, the, the cost of the state is, is fifty percent of that.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I just think it'd be important to, to, to always mention that.
Right.
Thank you. That brings us to time. Well, can we reach out to you and, and talk about this later?
Absolutely.
Okay, right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. That was actually really helpful. Yeah, that was super helpful and different performance. So thank you for taking the time to meet with us.
All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Michelle, for the sake of time, I'm going to make a motion that the other portion of our agenda be tabled till next month.
I agree.
Anybody else?
Any else object? Thank you, everybody, for coming. Oh, motion, well, I didn't say thank you, but thank you for coming. Thank you for hearing me. The one last thing is next, uh, month, we will be in person again. We will be at Jackson Lab. So, uh, what do you call, we're going to kind of move around the state, be a couple of places. So we'll look forward to seeing, uh, as many people as possible in person there. And now I'm going to make a motion to close.
No, I will make.
Second that.
Great, so we're into.
Okay.